Good evening. I am going to call our meeting to order for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 at 6:30. With that being said, I am going to ask Dennis London, council member, to lead us in our invitation.
Thank you, Mayor, for those that would care to join me. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening and ask for your wisdom, your guidance, and we ask for keeping everything civil as we go about doing the city of the people, the will of the people and the will of the city, and making sure that all of that is in keeping with what you want us to do and what you have asked us to do. We ask you to continue to send your blessings upon all those who have been impacted by any of the wars, the conflicts, and also the natural disasters that occurred, and specifically speaking of Kerrville residents. We ask that you continue to hold them in your prayers and your loving embrace. We ask all of this through your son's precious name. Amen.
(Inaudible) to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Inaudible) Texas, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. God bless Texas.
All right, so with that being said, we will see who we are honoring tonight. And tonight, we will honor BFC Bunny Long, United States Marine Corps, killed in action in Fallujah. So tonight, we will honor him, and I do that because I just let that be the reminder that rules of the corn should be always in effect. We should treat one another respectful, kind, and especially when we're honoring someone who gave their life for our country. Bev, can I go out of order here since I have public hearings four and one and four two, but I'd like to do the proclamation first, if that's okay? Okay, so we're gonna do the proclamation first, so I'm gonna come around here, and ladies, if you would join me. It's always a pleasure to see y'all, so thanks for coming, and we will do the proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to the magnificent document of the Constitution of the United States and its memorial anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas the tradition of celebrating the Constitution was started by the daughters of the American Revolution by petitioning Congress to set aside September 17th through 23rd annually to be dedicated for the observance of the Constitution Week, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America to proclaim the week beginning September 17 and ending September 23 of each year's Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution. Therefore, I Brian McNeil, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of McLennan-Chisholm in the state of Texas, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23rd Constitution Week in McLennan-Chisholm.
Thank you. Every year, we're so excited to come to the city and renew our commitment to the Constitution. And next year's a special year because it's America's 250th birthday, so we'll be back.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. One, that font was hard to read, and I clearly need to wear readers going forward. But that font was like a cursive.
Should we make it bigger, or should...
We need to make it bigger, yes. Thank you. Have a great day, and thank you so much. I think I'm blind. Um, okay. I feel like we haven't been here in a while. All right, um, should I do citizens' comments? Or should I do the public hearing first? What do you think? Public hearing? Okay, public hearing. So it is 6:35, and I'm going to open up public hearing for 4.1, public hearing to receive comments regarding levying ad valorem taxes for the tax year 2025 at a rate of 0.09239 per $100 assessed valuation on all taxable property within the corporate limits of the City of McLennan-Chisholm as of January 1st, 2026, the said tax rate having a maintenance and operations component and a debt service component. It is open. And if there are no comments, we will close that public hearing for 4.1. I will now open public hearing 4.2, public hearing to hear comments on the proposed voluntary organization of six properties within Glendaker subdivision now within our ETJ and into the city limits of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas. It is 6:36. And with no comments, we will close that one at 6:36. And now we will do citizens' comments. First up will be Gary Nickel.
Shall I just tell you?
Yes, please.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Gary Nickel at 612 Kentwood. I want to address the proposal to take private roads into the city's maintenance division, and I want to say that when we moved here 15 years ago, we didn't know that there was going to be frequent power outages, a critical shortage of water, and that we had to pay for our own road maintenance. So we decided we liked the place well enough to stay, and we were just putting up with those inconveniences. However, the road maintenance has been quite an ordeal in Kentwood. In the last 10 years, we've spent over $330,000 for 18 people, 18 homeowners, which is an average of $18,000 per homeowner over the last 10 years, which included at one point completely tearing up the road and completely rebuilding it from the base up. The rest of it was all patchwork, and it looks like it. We've got one of the ugliest roads in town, and it never lasts. The last time, when we had it rebuilt eight years ago, within a year, it already had cracks in it, and they said it was because we had too many trees. So I just want to say that if you're going to consider doing road maintenance for private road, take over private roads, that you better do it for everybody, because singling out one neighborhood with special consideration is completely inappropriate, and it's not fair. Thank you.
We did receive one citizen's comment from Aaron Easter, which we will be passed out to the council members so they could see it.
And, Mayor, and included in the minutes.
And included in the minutes. Next up will be Jason Eddington.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, Jason Eddington, 9500 FM 740, Fort Worth, Texas. Wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for District 2, Texas Senate seat. I love how you guys opened, and then what you said as far as how you treat each other is what matters. I live by the golden rule, which Matthew 7:12, "And all things do unto others as you would have them do unto you." And so one of the things, it's been challenging, but one of the things that I tell people as I go around is that what you will see from me is, through all of this, posterity for me is not who wins the race, it's how you run the race. And so you'll see my character, you'll see me not go low. That won't mean I won't defend as far as myself, obviously, within respectful guidelines, but I truly believe it's how you carry yourself that matters. That's the first part. The second part is, my two favorite presidents, I'm a huge fan of Lincoln, and I'm a student of Teddy Roosevelt. And for me, when people use the term "for the people," that's incomplete. Truly is "for the people." But there's a lot of people, when you look back at history, that were just for the people that were misguided. It's "by the people" and then "for the people." And "by the people" means being active, being involved, connecting with city leaders, making sure their priorities are my priorities, being engaged, creating connections, and it has to be tangible, it has to be something that they see, being actively involved. And so I'm excited to kind of be on this race, regardless of what happens, I'm gonna run it, you know? The end isn't what matters to me, it's how you run it. So I look forward to connecting with you. Hope you guys feel free and comfortable to reach out to me, and excited to be a part of the city council. I apologize that it hasn't been earlier. There's a lot of cities in District 2, so, but I'm excited to be working with you guys, and I look forward to kind of getting to know you better.
Thank you, Jason, and thanks for coming out tonight. Jason's running for Texas Senate. Thanks, Jason. Next up's gonna be consent agenda. I just need a two-minute recess. I have got to get my readers. I am not able to see tonight, so just two minutes at 6:41, two-minute recess, totally apologize, I'm blind. We're gonna go to consent agenda. I'm going to pull 7.2 for discussion, and we are going to remove 7.4 from consent altogether as it is not ready. So if everyone is okay with consent agenda 7.1, 7.3, 7.5, and 7.6, I'll entertain a motion unless anything else needs to be pulled.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Show that unanimous. So that's gonna have us discuss 7.2. And I will send this over to Bev.
And I'm gonna send it over to the Finance Director, Mr. White.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. As I mentioned in our last meeting, we got the updated figures from Rockwall County, or for, I'm sorry, from the City of Rockwall for costs for next year's wastewater estimate from them. Basically, if we continue at the rate that we're at right now, we would fall short about $100,000 of what it would cost us, the estimate, to run the wastewater system next year. So what we are asking is to raise the rate to $95.79 based on their estimate that will break even for us on our cost for that wastewater system from the City of Rockwall, and they passed their charges from North Texas Municipal Waste District, and then they also add an administrative fee to that. They did inform us that there will also be additional debt service coming on in coming years, so we will only get further behind unfortunately if we don't do this, so.
Can you tell me what it was prior to this increase, please?
$78.58 is what it is as of today.
And if I'm not mistaken, the last rate increase we had on this, the city, can you explain what happened on that deal so that...
Yeah, so we did, back in 2019, we had a wastewater study done that recommended, based on the information that we had at the time, what the estimated rate should be going forward, I want to say eight or 10 years. We have been below that estimated rate since we received that study. So last year, the study showed that we should have been at $81.12, so we were $2.54 per month underneath what that rate study showed that we should be at. So this year, the rate study, or for this coming fiscal year, the rate study recommends that we should be at 87.61, and that would only recover about half of the budgeted increase that we are expecting from Rockwall based on the information they gave us. So the 95.79 makes up that additional portion that we're not getting, and unfortunately, because we've been below what's estimated, we're a little bit behind than where we should be. And even with that, we will not have our fund balance where it should be at the end of the year after the sewer main break that we had earlier this year.
And again, this increase is due to the increase from North Texas...
Yes.
...through Rockwall, and then passed down to us, and then we have to pass it on to the citizens that are on sewer.
Correct. Yes, on sewer only.
Okay. Mr. London, do you have any questions for Mr. White on this?
The only question I have is the 95.79, how long will that be the current rate that we can estimate? I don't know.
They do one fiscal year at a time, so that's their, that basically covers what they're estimating for FY '26. And the good news is, as we put more houses on the sewer, that any increase gets divided amongst more houses, so hopefully we don't have a big increase like this again. However, like I mentioned, they did say that there would be more debt service coming online next year for a new line from North Texas, so.
Okay. So is it possible that this could be the rate going through FY '26 into '27, or...
It will definitely be going through FY '26, and then next, typically in August, is when they send us the estimates for the next year. And it depends on, it has to do with what our usage is, they take that into consideration. They take into consideration what their estimate they receive from North Texas. Like I mentioned, they put an administrative fee on top of that, and, you know, unfortunately, that gets passed on to us, and so we're just trying to make sure that we're not subsidizing the cost.
Right. Okay, thank you. No more.
Mr. Brewer.
And this takes effect October 1st, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are we gonna have a part of maybe the next bill that goes out, a mailer, or something to explain what was explained today as to why?
We can absolutely have information.
Because I have a feeling, because people that don't watch this will probably have a heart attack when they see it.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so we can definitely have infrastructure add that to the next statement.
For sure.
Okay, thank you. And this, I'm sorry, I just thought of something. But the ERB, yeah, part of the reason behind ERB is getting rid of some of our infomart costs, which goes into our utility billing as well. So that is something that could cause us to maybe even reduce it, if not this next year, kind of reduce the impact in future years, so.
Okay, so that's good to point out, so the ERB can bring this down because we won't have the cost through infomart, and then as you stated, the more homes that come on with sewer spreads at amongst, so while it is an increase now, it could be a decrease later.
Possibly, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin.
And I know you said break even already, but I just want to clarify, we are not adding anything to this. This is just due to trying to keep up and what we're being presented with.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bev, do you have any comments? And then, oh, I forget, we have Rich up on the screen doing this. Rich, Mr. Dean, do you have anything, sir?
Just a, just a couple. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. Yes, sir.
I did. I didn't, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I didn't, I didn't see any good workable alternatives to not doing this, but it sounds like you addressed a little, one question I had, and that this is, this is not a per, I mean, today it's a per-house number because of how many Sonoma Verde residents we have on there. If we get more development coming onboard at Sonoma Verde, it could possibly, they gave us a number for Sonoma Verde basically, or whoever's on sewer, and so that could go down because it's a per-house, right? It's not a, just a lump sum.
Yes, sir. So it's based... I think you already mentioned. So it's based on debt service, which that's the part that has more come onboard, will get spread over more homes, but it's also based on estimated actual flow. So those additional homes will create more flow as well, but they will also help us spread the additional costs that have nothing to do with what our citizens can control.
Gotcha. Okay, that's all I, that's all I had. Thanks.
And I want to stress, the reason this is a larger increase is because the city absorbed this in the past, meaning we did not pass it on to the consumer, but we're at a point where that can't happen.
Correct.
Okay. That's why there is also that larger gap.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so with any, nothing else further on 7.2, you know, we get to make that decision tonight, so I'll just do this by roll call vote on this one. So, Mr. London.
Aye.
Mr. Brewer.
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin.
Aye.
Mr. Dean.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, show that unanimous. That's gonna take us to item 8.1. Angela, I'll read them just because I'm trying to help the time on this one tonight. 8.1, discuss and consider approving an ordinance of the City of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, approving and adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, providing that expenditures for said fiscal year shall be made in accordance with said budget, appropriating and setting aside the necessary funds of the general and other revenues for said fiscal year for the maintenance and operation of the various departments and for various activities and improvements of the city, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date. I'll accept a motion on this.
So moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Mr. White.
Yeah, so the budget, I believe, was attached? Yes, is attached. This is essentially the same budget that we went through at the last workshop. There were no significant changes, there's been some minor things just with updated estimates and things like that that have gotten since then, but nothing substantial by any stretch of the imagination, so it's essentially the same budget that we discussed at the last workshop that we had.
Thanks, sir. Mr. London, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Brewer.
I just have a question on the roads part. We have it earmarked for $300,000 for roads, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that sounds correct.
Is, and if I remember from the budget workshop, we talked about if, if we end up doing a road study, that some of that money was going to be taken out of that, is that correct?
We actually have in the capital projects fund of $162,600, if I remember correctly, that is specifically for that road study.
Okay.
So that will not come out of that bucket.
And have we tied a specific road to that $300,000?
No, some of that would be like rock asphalt for patchwork for our streets, and then whatever else, but it's not tied to any specific project at this point. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Dean, do you have any questions on the budget on 8.1?
I do not, thank you.
And I do not as well, so this one, all those in favor for passing 8.1, say aye.
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 Show that unanimous as well. Item 8.2, discuss and consider approving an ordinance of the City of McLennan-Chisholm, Texas, levying an ad valorem tax for the year 2025 at a rate of 0.09239 per $100 assessed valuation on all taxable property within the corporate limits of the City of McLennan-Chisholm as of January 1, 2026, the said tax rate having a maintenance and operations rate of 0.081134 per $100 assessed valuation, and a debt service rate of 0.011256 per $100 assessed valuation, together with penalties and interest, providing a severability clause, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date. I'll entertain a motion on 8.2.
So moved.
Sir, second.
Second.
Mr. White, you're up again, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So this tax rate will fund the budget that you just approved. It's specifically the debt service rate is mandated, obviously, because we have to pay our debts, the additional part, the maintenance and operation is the part that we have control over at this point essentially, so, but this tax rate will fund a budget that you just approved.
Mr. London, do you have any questions, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Brewer.
No, sir.
Mr. Goodwin.
I know this is an increase, and I just would like to dive into this a little bit. Number one, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize, but I think you know this, so not trying to hang out the dry hair. Give me another city's tax rate comparable to our size, if you can.
There's no one else in Rockwall County under like 27 cents, I believe, and I know, pretty sure that I saw that Rockwall's holding a public hearing to raise theirs, so I think Mr. Hall and I have some cities our size that he's gonna know off the top of his head.
I have two cities that are within roughly 500 people populations as us, and their tax rates are .46 and change, and .72 and change.
And if I remember right, Farmersville, which is pretty close on our size, is somewhere in the 70 cent range.
So maybe Rockwall County's figured out how to run really efficiently. We're at a third of the next closest city, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
It's interesting that we're operating. Thank you.
Mr. Dean, do you have anything on this item?
Yeah, I, I just the one, I think it's a good point that Councilman just made, and that is that, you know, we're, this is strategic, this is, this is really where we need to go in for and, and being able to operate in the long term, and I think it's probably the most conservative strategy we could take. So anyway, that's, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Can you give me, Mr. White, the percentage of this increase? If you had to put it in a percent?
I don't have it pulled up. It was something like 2.4%, 2.3%, it's very small.
2.4% to 2.3% tax increase.
Yes, and attached to the agenda is a, something new that the legislature passed this year that we have to put when we were approving the budget. It's called the taxpayer impact statement. Basically, that shows what the median value is of the properties within the city limits, what the tax rate, what their tax bill for the year would be if we kept our, our tax rate the same as it was, and what it would be with the increase. Our median household property value that we receive from Rockwall CAD is $628,751. We have a lot of houses above that, we have a lot of houses below that, but that's the median. At that price point, the tax rate that we're at today compared to what we're proposing here is an increase of about $16 a year. It goes from $564.28 to $580.90.
So if someone said this is a 45% tax increase...
I don't know where they're getting that from, other than the values, which we have no control over what the values are, but the actual tax rate increase is nowhere near 45%, so I don't know where that would...
I just saw a number today and just thought I'd ask. All right, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And that is unanimous as well. Mr. White, I'm gonna excuse you from the rest of this meeting, and I appreciate you, and be safe on your travels.
Have fun and don't think about us.
Get out of here. Thank you for your work on the budget, Jeff.
I don't know how we let him out of here by eight o'clock, but that guy is feeling lucky right now, I promise you. All right, that's gonna bring us to 8.3. 8.3... 8.3, oh, no, we didn't. 8.3, I'm removing from the agenda tonight. I have spoken with Mayor Pro Tim on this, and we are removing it because these are important discussions, and we want all of council present. So 8.3 is being removed. 8.4 is next up. I will be removing that one as well, again, with the same, I would like all the council to be present. 8.5, I am also removing because Councilmember Powers, this is his deal, he is not here. I have spoke with him, so he understands that this will be removed as well, which brings us to item 8.6, discuss and consider approving Sanchez and Associates to review our current code of ordinances for needed revisions. I'll entertain a motion on this one.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Bev Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It has been suggested by our planning and zoning and some of our building components that we need an ordinance review to see if there's anything that is out of date or needs updated. So I reached out to Sanchez and Associates, which is our contracted planning consultant, and they have offered a review of all existing ordinances for a cost of $3,250. Now, this is strictly the review. If there needs to be work on any of them, we will get a new quote from them on what that's going to be, which ordinances it is, and whether staff, planning and zoning, council would like to take that on instead of Sanchez and Associates to update those ordinances.
Can you give that amount again, real quick?
$3,250.
$3,250, okay. Mr. London, do you have any questions on this one?
So this is all ordinances, just everything across the line?
All existing ordinances today.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim? Mr. Goodwin?
Seems like a lot of ordinances for $3,250.
He is well, he is well aware of how many there are.
Okay.
Mr. Dean, do you have anything, sir?
Well, I'm gonna say that, that was my thought exactly. What is the output from Sanchez? Are they gonna say, these are the ordinances that will need changing? Or are they gonna say, yep, you're really bad, we need to change stuff? Or somewhere in between?
They will actually let us know which ones need addressing, and then if we choose to go with them to do the addressing, they will give us a cost for that. Or if we think that there are simple changes that staff can make, planning and zoning can weigh in on, Peyton Sherman, our planner, council, we can do it ourselves.
Thank you.
I think it's a bargain, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 So that one unanimous. My gosh, we might get out of here by 7:15. 8.7, discuss and consider the creation of a finance and audit advisory board. Do I entertain a motion on this one? No, because we're creating a board, right?
There's a resolution attached to it.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Stevens?
Thank you. You have a resolution in front of you that will establish a board to serve as an advisory body to the city council and city administration, defining its purpose to include review and recommendation on financial management practices, annual budget development, investment policy compliance, long-term financial planning, audit engagements, and periodic review of financial policies. So it has been suggested that the types of members we would put on this board, and I would suggest no more than five, that they be bankers, CFOs, auditors, CPAs, that can help guide the city's financial health.
If, in that resolution, we have a place for a council member, is that correct?
Yes.
That is as a liaison spot?
Correct.
Okay, so everyone up here knows I am not good with numbers, but Councilmember Goodwin is. I would like Councilmember Goodwin to oversee that as the liaison, if he so wants to take on that task along with the few hundred other things I've asked him with. So I would nominate him to be that liaison if y'all are good with it, council, and if he accepts it.
Mayor, you need to adopt the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Before you appoint a council liaison.
I'm just assuming it's gonna happen.
And technically, the council liaison is not on the agenda.
Oh.
So all you can do tonight is adopt the resolution, and then at a future meeting, you can appoint the liaison to the committee, and we can discuss citizen members.
Well, that's, I appreciate that. That, and it's been about a month since we had a council meeting, so we'll go down the line. Mr. London, do you have any questions on this with, for Ms. Stevens?
No, I think this is a great idea, because we have a lot of, I'll say there's a lot of rumbling about finances and things going on from the dais, what's happening in the city, and this gives people a direct access and direct capability to have their, their input and overview. So I'm all in favor of this.
Beautiful. Mayor Pro Tim?
I don't have any problems with it. I was just looking on the membership, it says it consists of six citizens plus, not five.
Excuse me.
So is six gonna be okay, or do we need to amend?
Yes, six is fine.
All right, just checking. Thank you.
Mr. Goodwin, since I already put you under the bus, do you have anything to add?
Uh, I, number one, I think it's a great idea. I do feel that there are quite a few tasks coming from you, and this would kind of help take some of, take some of that work off. I do, I do have a question. Would there be a budget at all? The Public Funds Investment Act training that I did, I think it would be very beneficial for anybody on this to do, and there is a cost to that. Would there be any funds available for these types of training?
There is training dollars in the budget, but we would have to just see if there would be enough to send every, all six members to go.
I would try to avoid that, and the only reason I would is because if we're asking for bankers, CFOs, and CPAs, I think they're gonna have a general knowledge, is my hope, being that we are trying to squeeze eliminate out of the turn up sometimes.
I see where Councilman Goodwin's coming from, because those are public accountant types, and we are public, we are municipal.
Understood.
So when you think about corporate finance, business finance versus municipal and government finance, the Public Information Act, he is right, has, or, what you call it?
Okay, well, then let's.
Investment Act.
Let's look into it.
There are certain things, so maybe the first year we couldn't send all six, but maybe we can send a few to go.
Maybe, maybe just one besides me.
Or if we're able to get them in the environment where they can watch it together, and we save money that way. But yes, I agree, I stand corrected. So it's hard to believe we disagreed up here and were able to work it out. Mr. Dean?
Great idea. I think just the more creativity we can get behind every financial decision, I think the better, and I, it's a great idea.
I want to echo Mr. London. I think this is a great thing, because you see so much going on out there on social media, and this is just another spot to check some balance, not only us in transparency, but Jeff and how the city operates. I got this idea at one of the mayor's lunches. Mayor McClure of Heath enacted this, and he actually said to myself and Bev that he feels this is gonna be the greatest accomplishment he ever did for the city of Heath, and I have to, I have to agree. So we, we followed suit from Heath, and so I'm good. So all those in favor, say aye.
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 So that unanimous. So that's gonna bring us to council members' reports and announcements. Chief, Jim Evans. Mr. London?
I just want to remind everyone that we have the September 11 memorial coming up. It's gonna be over at the county courthouse, over in the memorial area where the flags are, so I believe that starts at 08, 8:30, 08:30. So if you can make it over there, it would be great to have you there. It's an important date that we all should never forget.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I don't want to make that.
Mr. Goodwin?
Second Wednesday at Rosa's tomorrow. Come on down, ask any questions. This is for the community to connect with me, ask any questions, tell me, tell me thoughts on anything that you guys see going on, just opportunity for everybody. So 7:30 to 9:00 AM at Rosa's, near the 30. Come have a breakfast taco and let's go.
He turned his mic off, y'all probably didn't hear that he was gonna pay. Mr. Dean?
Uh, weather's fine in Las Vegas. That's my only announcement tonight. Anyway, thanks for letting me join in. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dean, you're welcome to excuse and then have fun in Vegas, sir. Thank you for joining us tonight. Appreciate you. Ms. Stevens?
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, but I have a whole big list. The Extreme Green Event will be held Saturday, September 27, from 8:00 AM to noon. You have a flyer at your place at the dais, and there is a stack at the table at the back for the citizens that talks about the accepted items and the map through the Chisholm Baptist Church. Rockwall CAD Board nomination, we are asked to nominate one resident at the next meeting to be placed on the CAD ballot. We will have six votes in this election. If you need criteria on the candidates, it's available in my office, so just let me know. It'll be on the next agenda. Mayor Pro Tim Brewer and I met with P3 Works about the sale of the RCH water lines. There will be action on the next agenda in the form of an ordinance that will make it possible for us to do this. The Comprehensive Plan Action Committee, we have contracted with Sanchez and Associates to oversee this project for us. They have asked for five members. We currently have four committed, applied, with one more ask out. I will be bringing those names to the next council meeting for y'all to say yea or nay. The Park Board. The Park Board still has zero volunteers stepped up, and because we have a large development coming at us that has a large city park in it with a lot of really cool amenities that they are willing to put in it, but they would like to have input from the Park Board, whether what they are thinking is what the citizens really want. So I will make a plea to the public that we do need volunteers to sign up to be on the Park Board. The County Infrastructure Committee, the mayor and I attended the workshop last, a couple weeks ago, where each city presented their priority list. Our next meeting is next Wednesday, the 17th. An update on the past due sewer and trash bills, we have approved the letter between us, Infomarc, and RCH. The 10, the top 10 past due accounts will be going out in the next 10 days or so, once we get cutoff dates from Rockwall, and we will give you an update in October. Also on the next council agenda will be the 548 fire station remodel bids coming to you to remodel it to become a public works facility and additional office space. FYI, Tech dot sent me two large bridge packets that need some major repair on Clutz Road. Mark Woodruff is working with County Roden Bridge and a few other companies with Jeep's help and myself to try to get some bids out on that. We have 18 months to complete the work, and we have no idea at this point what it's going to entail. The last thing I have, it has been suggested that we hold a council, a joint council P&amp;Z training led by our illustrious attorney, Mr. Michael Holla, and I have talked to Fabrice about this and see what his thoughts are on it. He thinks it's a wonderful idea. He had some things to add to the agenda for it, and the suggested date he had was 9:24 at 6:30 PM. I think I already have one member who will not be able to attend, so if the rest of you can let me know if you're available or not. Yes.
And I have two things. One, just to address, Mr. Nickel, the ordinance is for all private roads, so there is no exclusion to one neighborhood or the other, so. Could be, if, if done right or wrong. One other thing that I have is sad news. Ms. Bev Stevens, last day will be on September 23, as our new city manager will be starting on September 22. She will be around to help transition the new city manager. But with that said, on 9/23, from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM at the fire station, we will be hosting a going away lunch, and the public is invited. All the staff will obviously be there. I hope all the council members can be in attendance, but it is going to be an opportunity for us to thank you for the hard work that you've done, the amazing competence that you have had in this role, and the value that you have brought to our city in your time, that you've been not only a city administrator, but the very first title of city manager, even though it's. I timed that at 37 seconds. I need 38 seconds when it's my last meeting, please. And with that said, it is 7:16. We missed it by a minute. We're adjourned. Thank you, Rich.
Bev, have a good one.
Have fun, Rich.